We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Want to welcome everyone who's come to the meeting tonight that's in attendance and also those who'll be watching the meeting on G-10 television. We've got a house full of folks tonight. I like it when I have company up here. I don't want to do this all by myself. Anyway, we're going to start off by everybody rising for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Randy Thomas followed by the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father is always at this time we pause to give you thanks. To give you thanks for the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon each of us and upon us jointly as the members of this city of Jacksonville. We give thanks for the life and the sacrifice of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whose birthday we celebrated yesterday nationally. We pray that in honor of his sacrifice and of his life, we will commit ourselves to serving others on a daily basis. We pray for our military members who are serving us here and around the world for their safety, for their anxious families. And as always, we pray your guidance and direction to be with our mayor and with our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Please be seated. Council, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Two moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have an agenda. Alright, we're going to do some presentations and I'm going to come around front. The first presentation this evening I have a, I'm honored and humbled to do because we have some young men here tonight that made me very proud because my alma mater is Jacksonville High School. I want to ask Coach Bo Williams and your other coaching staff and your team that you work with, with the team, if y'all will come up.
Jacksonville Cardinals.
Coaching, good show.
Over here with me. Good playing guys, tell ya. Plenty of room, plenty of room. Well, we emptied about half the auditorium. The Jacksonville High School football team finished second in the state for their division, overcoming the effects of Hurricane Florence, which canceled some of their games and some of their practices. But they also had to contend with late trainers in muddy fields. I don't know what that means by the late trainers. The season marks a pinnacle for the team and the school having achieved a level that has not been matched in many years. This was the first state final since 1994. The Cardinals finished with 11 wins and two losses. One of the losses was in the final against a second-time champion on a less than desirable field. The other was against the always tough Havelock team. That was overcome in the playoffs. Way to go guys. Hey listen, you know, Mayor Lewis there in Havelock, you know, he always took a little bit of pride in his team always coming out on the top end of that, but hey, kudos, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Cardinals are 22 and 5 for the last two seasons and this is a remarkable record for Jacksonville High School's football team. And when one considers that the first year that Bo was the coach of the team, yeah, it didn't do so hot, did it? It wasn't looking too good, was it? But, but, then 2 and 9, and now, and now, we have finally, you know, broke through, I believe. Yes, sir. Put together, you have a great team here. That's one reason the Daily News named Bo Williams as Coach of the Year. That's a great honor. Haven't achieved much since his first 2010 season when he took over the team. You know, this year, even though you guys didn't win the final, you gave, you gave that Charlotte Catholic a good run for their money, you know, for a team that, well, we'll keep that, we won't say anything else about that, will we? The pro team, I mean, you know. But anyway, I'm very, I'm very proud of you guys for what you were able to accomplish. The senior, let's see, it says, "The Daily News also awarded Cardinal Justin Benton..." Who's, where's Justin? Hey, Justin. "...as the Player of the Year for the second time." Wow. What position you?
Quarterback.
You're the quarterback? Okay, I was going to ask Bo. "The senior was selected by the staff of the Daily News and area coaches and the Daily News called him the key cog in Jacksonville advancing to the state final for the first time since 1994." Coach Williams, Justin Benton, and all these players behind me and the coaching staff and support staff, the city of Jacksonville says congratulations and honors to you for a great year representing our community very well everywhere you went along the way. Again, I know some of you have some busy schedules, I know probably some of you have homework and stuff you have to do, but I really do thank you for taking the time out of your day to come up here and let us honor you, and I do mean honor you because, like again, like I said, I can't say it enough, we're very proud of what you were able to accomplish this year. Thank you so much. Bo, again, congratulations on Coach of the Year and Player of the Year.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you guys. Oh yeah, come on up and get your pictures. You can come on up closer or whatever it takes to get all, everybody in.
Your last call. Let's give them one more round of applause.
I understand very much for coming out. Thanks. Our next presentation tonight is recognition for the 2018 Clean and Green Star Awards for Holiday Decor. And Dr. Washington, or Councilmember Dr. Washington is going to join me up front here in these presentations. Dr. Washington is the council liaison to the Appearance Advisory, Environmental and Advisory, Appearance Advisory Committee. The Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee is responsible for the Clean and Green Star Awards. This is the fourth year of the recognition of the Holiday Decor Awards. During October through December, the committee asked for nominations and suggestions for homes and businesses with outstanding displays. The entire community, committee was invited to tour the city on December 12, 2018 to review the nominations made and to seek out other places for recognition. The committee saw the effects of Florence on many homes on the tour. They also found amateur and professional decorations. New technologies such as programmed message messaging Christmas tree were spotted, so too were simple lights in wreaths at many homes. After much deliberation, the group elected to make several awards in several categories. And, we're going to call them up one at a time? Okay, so... I've got some advisory committee members here. I've been made aware. Thank you Betty. Thank you Eugene, appreciate it. The first one. Okay, so we're going to call it first for Neighborhood Award at Williams Farm. I'd ask Dr. Bob Shiegog to join me up front. He's the Homeowners Association President. And thank you Bob for coming tonight.
How are you sir? Just a little bit of a narration about the Neighborhood Award going to Williams Farm and it is being accepted by Dr. Bob Shiegog. This committee basically felt that they were really impressed with the uniformity and styles selected for this neighborhood and while some of the neighbors exceeded that, the overall presentation invoked gingerbread homes and tight lines and uniform lights. Therefore, the committee felt that the Neighborhood Award was going to be presented to the homeowners for Williams Farm for their professional service and excellence that, excuse me, that they have shown throughout the years, so congratulations for your award.
Next, we have the Gold Star Best Family Classic Decor. Donnie and Lucid DeHagera from Empire Boulevard.
This is a story of a family, a grandfather that ensures his grandchildren know how important Christmas is and a display that takes many hours to create and maintain. Candy cane lights welcome the children in the home and icicle lights accent at the architectural of the home as well. The white picket fence is lit and projection themes even decorate the size of the home. But many of the characters must be special for the grandchildren that visit and this house celebrated Christmas with some of the best decorations that a family could want. Congratulations.
Next, I would like, this is the Best Traditional Classic Decor. This is Angela and Timmy Solem from Keller Court.
Classic is the word that best describes this home. The committee agreed that well-litted display of greenery and lights fits this neighborhood and the home and the family. The features of this white trimmed home are displayed as well as the accent of the greenery of this country's and cottage-style homes are wonderful. The gray chimney features a large wreath that draws the eye upward and makes one wonder what Christmas goodies are inside. The wreaths provide a plentiful and miniature Christmas tree that welcomes visitors both home and near away. Congratulations.
Next, we have the Gold Star Nostalgia. This is the home of David and Eileen Galliette on River Court.
Santa still drives his classy red Chevy pickup truck this year for the second-time winter. The committee is amazed by this presentation and agrees that Santa is at the wheel of the truck is the centerpiece. Expertly lit it so everyone can see Santa's head moving inside the truck can be amazed by this wonderfully restored truck and the stacked bed filled with Christmas tree ready for gifts. Congratulations.
Last, we have the Gold Star Best Quaint Presentation. This is Lee Monarch and Ray Kennedy from Jean Circle.
The second-time winner was a unanimous decision by the committee. They loved the white picket fence adorned with lights and neatly marked red accents at the posts. They remarked at the new inclusion of the north side of the home inviting their guests into the back of the home. The committee liked the mailbox decorations, the properly-sized wreath on the windows and the shrubbery of the archway that gave a welcoming for Christmas. This is a cottage that has been well-decorated for Christmas again. Congratulations.
Did anybody come in that we didn't capture? Russ Asana? Okay, okay. Would you please come up there? This is for the... Okay, you can take that one.
This is for the Gold Star Griswold Worthy. The family has won Halloween and other contests. They know how to decorate and this year, the style was candy gingerbread wreaths and Christmas tree adorned was in abundance as well as a deer and the cute figures. The tight lights followed the architectural features of the home and this site was a great one for those who live nearby or travel down their city streets. Congratulations.
How would you want to arrange a photograph of everyone?
And I guess the Mitchell family?
The Mitchell family didn't come in, did they? Any chance?
Brian Kirby Mitchell? Okay, that was the only one that we didn't do. How do you want to arrange this?
Let's do them one at a time. Let's start with any, you know, the family with the... Committee? Bet you got to stand up.
Alright, so now, we're going to go on to the oath of office for our new youth council officers and I'm going to ask Lily Gray and Pamela Traptan, Pam? Okay. To join me up front. They're from our Community Engagement Department. So I'm going to call, I'm going to call our young folks up here and I guess we got enough bibles there to do our swearing-in. We had to, we had to go find them, okay. Somebody had taken them out of the council chambers. First off, I'd like to ask Tamara Waters, who's Office of Chairman, and she comes from Oslo Early College High School. I'm going to get them all up here and we'll do it all at one time. How's that? Amara Mueller, Vice Chairman from Herschel Academy. Hopefully I pronounced all that correctly. Okay, Amara. Thank you, thank you. Terrence Cooper Jr., Secretary from Three Sons Learning Institute. Colin Davis, Recorder from Oslo Early College High School. Cameron Davis, the at-large seat from Oslo Early College High School. Cameron Davis, the at-large seat from Onslow Early College High School. Micah Schooler from White Oak High School, filling that seat. The Jacksonville High School seat is going to be filled by Victoria Gonzalez. Now, does everybody have, do you have somebody here to hold? We got one more? Oh, I'm sorry. I almost left out Northside. We have the Northside Seat and this is Ahmed Fona. You're going to hold for him? You got a holder? You're going to have a double? Okay, we'll do a double. Okay, so here's what we're going to do. I'm going to read this and you're going to repeat after me. And when it comes to your, state your name, that's your name, and then you'll just repeat after me. After, just a second now. Tonight, we're going to administer the Oath of Office for the 2019 Jacksonville Youth Council Officers. The Youth Council serves to give youth in Jacksonville a voice. They govern themselves, perform public service, and are available to provide connection from the City of Jacksonville Council to the youth community. We, as elected officials of the City of Jacksonville, welcome their input and their suggestions. So now, we're going to do the oath. So if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as and state your office. I heard every one of you. Of the Jacksonville Youth Council and maintain and uphold all the laws and regulations of the City of Jacksonville. So help me God. Congratulations, new officers for 2019. Folks who are in the very back, why don't you come up so you have a good picture? One more round of applause.
So Glenn, can you roll that, please? As you can see, they were volunteering at the soup kitchen. They made peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. The rumor that they ate one for every two they made is not necessarily correct. They also washed dishes, as you can see, and did just general cleanup and supported the activities of the soup kitchen. Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your service. It's great, great of you to do that, take time out of your day. Okay, next, for the next presentation, we're going to present, we have a check being presented to the North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run, this Running with the Law fundraiser event. And at this time, I would like to invite Chief Mike Inero, along with the Race Committee members and Captain Robert Spitalrick Co., who's the North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run Coordinator, Director, Co-Director. Chief, how's it going? Hey, good to see you again. The Running with the Law was an annual partner event to National Night Out. The race consists of a 5K, 8K, and a one-mile fun run and a virtual run. This year, this is the sixth year for the event that is a fundraiser for North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run. This year's event raised $5,813. Wow. That's really good. That's a good job there. You got a check for us? You want to give it, you want to give, you want to present it to... Would you like to say a few words?
Hey, appreciate everyone being here and I really appreciate Chief Inero and the Jacksonville Police Department on behalf of the North Carolina Law Enforcement Torch Run Council. As the mayor said, I'm a co-director for the state. And what this means is we have law enforcement officers and agencies from across the state that raise money that goes directly to support over 44,000 Special Olympic athletes in the state of North Carolina. So they do a wonderful job. They ended up with a little over $22,000 that your agency raised in doing events just like this last year. And they've really, really come charging to the front over the last couple of years. I think they've over-tripled in the last three years the amount of money that they've raised for Special Olympics. And it's agencies like this all across the state raising money, helping out our athletes, sending them to competition. We've actually sent athletes from North Carolina to the international competition that was in Seattle, Washington, as well as our state games. And we're sending them to Dubai this year for the International Games with some of the money. So it really goes a long way. Thank you. Thanks, Chief, and thank you guys.
I know locally, Chief Inero has been very instrumental in keeping the torch run going. And you want to say a couple of words there, Chief?
Yeah, this year, I got to do Over the Edge, which was, which was an exciting event. But you know, the most exciting part was coming down on the bottom and meeting the athletes. You know, when you, when you look at their eyes and you see the joy in their eyes of the competition that they're involved with, it's all worthwhile. You know, and I've been running in the, in the Special Olympics every year since 1986. I'm talking about my age now, but, but because I feel it's so important, feel that, that giving, giving people an opportunity to excel and, and building their self-esteem is, is a great way to serve our community. So thank you very much for what you do statewide and congratulations on, on a well, well-put-on event. Even though I didn't place this year, I mean...
These are your key folks for putting on the event. You want to introduce them?
Sure, I'll let them, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hey, everybody. I'm Officer Crisco, Community Officer with Police Department. Actually, for this coming year, 2019, I'm taking over the chair position for Special Olympics fundraising for Jacksonville Police Department. So we're looking forward to a very good year and we are going to aim for top 10 this year. And we appreciate all the community support. We love it. We love doing this for the athletes. So thank you.
And I'm Corporal Vanessa Smith. I work in our traffic unit and I'm one of the race coordinators for the event.
Nick Veronjo, I work for the Recreation and Parks Department and I'm also on the committee for the race.
Well, thank, thank you all very much for your efforts and what you do. It's very admirable that you get out there and work so hard, you know, for, for the folks that are so deserving of what you do. Thank you. I forgot, they're next, too. They're a busy man tonight. They're a busy man. All right, Lieutenant White. Okay, I have, I have with me again Chief Inero, Mike Inero, from the Public, Department of Public Safety Police, Police Department for 30-some years when I worked there. I still, I still, I still haven't got out of that rut yet. So it'll take me a while. And I have Lieutenant Teresa White, who is the National Night Out Coordinator. And any, who all we have here that are on the committee? Come on up. I could have kept you up here, too, Vanessa. National Night Out brings out communities, brings us all together nationwide to promote police community crime prevention efforts. We've been doing this for how many years in Jacksonville?
You started it.
I know. I can't remember. It's been, we start, we, yeah. This will be 21 years. Yeah, this will be 21 years, 2019. We started in 2000, or 1998, which seems like a century ago. The National Association of Town Watch has selected the City of Jacksonville as a national award winner for the 2018 National Night Out that was held August 7, 2018. This, this award for the 2018 is the 10th consecutive award that we've received for National Night Out from the national level. We have a plaque here that I want to present. I'm going to present it box and all so that you'll have something to carry it in. But it's a nice plaque, again, it's 10. And this is for 2018, recognizing outstanding participation in America's Night Out against crime. You want to present that? Before you, before you leave, the National Night Out is one of the premier events that we have here in Jacksonville. And it's the first Tuesday of August each year, you know, it's, sometimes it's prior to school going back in. So, you know, it's a good time to come down to downtown Jacksonville, which is a beautiful place. It's, it's very nice down there if you've not been before. We usually draw a very good crowd, but the crowd has a lot of opportunity to be able to interact with some of our public safety people from the county, from the state, from the federal government, to their police, local police departments. And it's just a great time had by everybody. You know, it's, I encourage you to come down if you've been before and also if you've never been, it's a good opportunity for you. And thank you all for what you do as far as putting that together. I might as well just get you a seat right up here. All right, the next, the next one, I take a lot of pride in doing. This is an outstanding service award. And I'm going to invite Mike Inero, the Public Safety Director. Of course, he's already here. So, so much for the invitation. I'm going to read something to you, or to everybody. Each year, one police chief is recognized for their significant contribution to both North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police and to the law enforcement profession in North Carolina. This year, the association recognized Chief Mike Inero for outstanding dedication for his work that had a positive impact on the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police. And I pause here. Fay, come on up here and stand next to the chief. You didn't think you were going to come here tonight without work, did you? A few of the chiefs, Chief Inero's accomplishments include the 2017 President of the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police, Chairman of the Metropolitan Chiefs Association, facilitated the development of the strategic plan for the association, and represented the association on the Attorney General's opioid task force. And I'm very pleased to present this outstanding, outstanding service award to Chief Mike Inero for all he's done is to further law enforcement in, not only in Jacksonville, but in North Carolina. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for watching me. Show, show me your plaque, please.
Yeah, before, could I, could I come on you to say just a few words? I, I, and the command staff is here. If they'd come up just for a second, some of the staff is here and some of the staff of the partnership, because I think, I think they should come up as well. Dawn and Marie. And also, I told Gail I was going to make her come up, too. Gail, come on up here, please. She's not going to come. But, you know, I want to, first, I want to thank the council, okay? Because, you know, this is not really about me. This is about, about the support that you all give me and give our staff to make this community better. You know, I've had the opportunity to do a lot of different things. I've had a lot of opportunity to do a lot of different things with the state. We've been very successful in our legislative efforts. We've done quite a bit. So I couldn't do that if it wasn't for the support of the council. And I think about, about the, the things that we've done over the last year and how much support the council has given me. And then I think about the support that the staff has given me, even, even Gail, who, who manages to find money everywhere. Or, or Mr. Carter, who we, who we sit and talk about a lot of different things and work through a lot of decisions. Mr. Massey and, and Dr. Woodruff, who, who work, who work with me through the, through these issues. And then the command staff, you know, whenever I, whenever I come back with an idea, they always kind of look at me like, you really want us to do this? But you know, they make those things work. You know, at, at this conference, one of the things that we did was we presented and talked about the successes that we've had in use of force reduction and, and how that has, how that has improved the quality of law enforcement services. We had an 18% drop in use of force over the last several years. And a lot of it has been because of the staff and, and how they focused on retraining and retooling and looking at, looking at, at how they address mental health, opioid abuse. And a lot of that, a lot of that came from their expertise and their dedication to making our community better. And then I think about the partnership, because I think, you know, as we've partnered with them over the last 15 or 16 years and we've looked at the Child Advocacy Center and how we make children's lives better. You know, so this is, while this is a great honor, it doesn't just belong to me. It belongs to all these folks that have taken their time out to make our community better. And, and, you know, there were two or 300 police chiefs that were, that were in, in that room. And a lot of them had, had questions about what the, what, what I did and how I did things and why I did things this particular way. You know, the biggest thing... You know, the biggest thing I tell them is that it's really about the community. And then the person, she went back down, sat down. I don't know why. But the person that's really stood behind me during everything is my wife Fay. Fay, come on back up here. Thank you for being there every single day. I appreciate it. The love of my life. But I really did want to take an opportunity to thank everybody for all the support, because I really don't think, in a lot of communities, that support isn't there, that connection to the community isn't there, and we're lucky in this community. We're lucky to have, we're lucky, we're blessed to have a city council who's very supportive. You know, I think about Mr. Warden, who asks me every day, you know, thanks me for the service, or Councilman Washington, who asks about Fay all the time, Councilman Jackson, who was on the Weed and Seed Committee back in 2009, when we were looking at being proactive. And then Mr. Thomas and Mr. Bittner, who asked those tough questions, and then, of course, the Mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, who've been so supportive, you know, talk about all these kinds of issues that we've worked on, whether it was opioid, whether it's child abuse, those kinds of things that need council support. So, thank you for that. It makes my job much easier, and it makes Jacksonville a better place to live. And I'll say this in closing, you know, I was told by some folks that we're having problems with opioids, that, hey, you saved my son's life. And I said, you know, I didn't save your life. I said, this community did, because the community came together in a number of different ways and tried to address this issue and continues to address that issue. And, you know, that means a lot when a parent can say, "You saved my kid's life," and thank you for that. And everybody in this room needs to be proud of this city, because it is truly a great place to live. So, thank you, Mayor. They need to come up, too.
Anybody with the Police Department, come forward, please.
Now, folks, this is going to work. We've got a forum, at least a couple of lines here. Let's have everybody step forward, two or three steps. Oh, Mr. Carter, come on.
Yeah, you're not going to get left out.
Come on, Gail.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Before I allow the chief to escape back to the seat, I want to congratulate you again, you know, for the job that you do as our police chief here. It's very commendable. I mean, you make people look up to us now, where we used to have to look up to everybody else, and I think that goes a long ways as far as community pride is concerned. You know, we have a low crime rate as a result of some of the things that you've implemented, some of the things that managers implemented, as far as, you know, making our town, city a lot nicer place to live and a lot less conducive to crime. There's a lot of people that are probably very envious of you in this state as far as what you've been able to do here. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I realize that a lot of people came tonight for the presentations, so I'm going to take just a moment for a little breather here before we get into the rest of the meeting, because I know some of you probably came here tonight in hopes of not having to stay for the rest of the meeting, so here's your chance to make a run for it. So, we're going to, you're certainly welcome. Bye.
Who is she saying?
Ann Raymond.
Oh, okay. Didn't recognize her.
Come for the first section of public comment for tonight's meeting. Anyone, I have, no one has signed up on the sheet here, but I know that, you know, the comings and goings of things, somebody may have come in before, after we took the sheet up. Anybody wish to speak at public comment? Okay, we're going, go now to adoption of the minutes and the consent items for tonight's meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adopt.
I move for the adoption of the minutes and consent items, as shown.
Second.
We have a motion, and the second is, are there any further discussion? Gary Nutt, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We also have the minutes from the January 8, 2019, regular workshop meeting. Did I include that? Was that included?
Included it.
Okay, you did include that?
I thought I did.
Okay. So, we're going to go all the way down to the item number seven on the agenda, and this is an ordinance directing the code enforcement official in the Community Engagement Department to demolish and remove the dwelling at 202A Marine Plaza. And Gary Willett is going to present this item, Chief Zoning and Code Enforcement Officer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you. This agenda item is a request for an ordinance directing code enforcement officials in the Community Engagement Department to demolish and remove the dwelling at 202A, excuse me, Marine Plaza. In order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city, the City Code, Chapter 5, Division 6, the Housing Code, establishes minimum standards for fitness for initial and continued occupancy of all buildings used for habitation as authorized by general statutes. The City Code, Chapter 5, Division 6, the Housing Code, establishes minimum standards, which states, "Every dwelling and dwelling unit used as a human habitation or held out for as a human habitation shall comply with all the minimum standards of fitness for human habitation," and all of the requirements of the sections of the code. The property we're discussing tonight is Zone Residential Multifamily Low Density, RMFLD. The Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3, Section 3.5, which regulates that section of the ordinance and that zoning designation allows only one single-family dwelling unit per lot. There are, as you can see on the slide, there are currently two dwelling units on this lot. Therefore, that makes the back dwelling unit a non-conforming structure or use, and therefore, any type of permits for repair, renovations, or alterations could not be issued if applied for. The back dwelling unit has been vacant and neglected since 2006. It is dilapidated and unfit for human habitation and remains in violation of the code. The City Code, Chapter 5, Division 6, establishes procedures for enforcement. Inspections have been completed. Notifications to property owners of record have been sent. Hearings have been conducted, and findings of facts and orders have been delivered. As you can see in your agenda item, the staff has been addressing this issue with the property owners since 2015. The findings and order issued by the code enforcement official to the current property owners on September 11 of 2018 cited the conditions of the structure, the tax value of the structure, the estimated cost of repairs for bringing the structure up to minimum standards of habitability, and directed that the structure be demolished and removed within 90 days. And that 90 days has passed. On two separate occasions, the Community Engagement Department has offered voluntary demolition through the city's Community Development Block Grant Program to the property owner that has been declined. As of the date of this meeting, the owners of record have failed to comply with those findings of fact and order. The code states that after failure of an owner of a deteriorated or dilapidated dwelling unit to comply with an order of the inspector within the time specified therein, if injunctive relief has not been sought or has been granted, the inspector shall submit to the council an ordinance ordering the inspector to cause such dwelling or dwelling unit to be demolished and removed as provided by the original order of the inspector. Attached in your agenda item is the ordinance for your consideration directing code enforcement official in the Community Engagement Department to demolish and remove the structure. I do believe there's property owners or persons with interest in the audience tonight, should you allow them to speak. And that's all I have this evening. If you have any questions of me.
Questions, Council? You say you have some folks here that wish to speak. Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Could you just green light come on? Excuse me, Mayor Council, this property was owned by Mrs. Maddie Salmon. Mrs. Salmon had actually, prior to her death, had signed a document saying-
We could take the property down, just like we've done for over 100 other units here in town, and that we were authorized to do that. The problem at that time was there was a lien against the property, several thousand dollars of mortgage. Again, as Mr. Willett said, there's two structures actually on this property. So, after she signed the document, the lien was on the property, she and her husband, Mr. Sturtevant, indicated, "Well, as soon as we settle a personal injury case, we're going to pay that lien off." When Miss Salmon died, the personal injury case was settled. The lien was paid off. But again, it was not paid off until after her death. And so, therefore, we tried to work with Mr. Sturtevant, who was her husband, and I understand that she has one child, a daughter, and Mr. McMillan, and we'll talk about that in a moment. But again, since this is a legal parlance known as heir property, there's never been in the state administration, so we did run an ad in the papers required by law and indicated anyone who wanted to come, they should come and speak to Council tonight to give their thoughts on this, because there may be other heirs out there. But I wanted to give you a little bit of the background of why we're here. But we do, on the front house, not this house, but the front house, they have actually begun to put some shingles and pulled a permit and started to put some shingles on that house. But this is the back house, and again, as Mr. Willett has already aptly pointed out, they can't get a permit, because you've got two houses on one lot, and you can't get a permit for that second house. But there are some folks, I believe, that are here, would like to speak, Mayor. Be glad to answer the questions.
There is someone wishes to speak. Please come up to the podium here. Let's do it one at a time. Pardon, yeah. If you would state your name and address for the clerk, please.
My name is James McMillan. I resign at 1318 Right Gate Drive in Pleasant Garden, North Carolina. And I'm here on behalf of the property. If we can go back a little bit, right now, my wife, which is Okima Salmon, she's the daughter of Cheyenne, and at the time that this had came up, my wife was going through some illness, and I'm pretty much been in charge of the family. So, by that saying, I really didn't have, even the daughter didn't have too much say in this property on the reason it's been left, neglect for so long. So, now that the grandmother had passed, or the mother had passed, they kind of like turned it over to me and the grandchildren, who is the, pretty much the heirs right now, because she only had one sibling. So, what I'm trying to do is, I went to Mr. Sturtevant, and when he, after she passed and everything kind of settled, he came to me and said he would like, she would like to leave something for her grandchildren to have. So, I told him, "Well, if you're going to do that, I would like to go ahead and step in and take care of the property, because they are my children." I have four, three girls and a boy, and I would like to try to fix the property up on behalf of those grandchildren. So, that's how I got into play, into dealing with the property. So, at this time, I would like to save the property for my children, for them to have something left, and I think it would be a good idea. It won't be neglect long since I'm in charge now, or hopefully, I'll be in charge. But we're going to need some time. Since I live in Greensboro, I have another business there in Greensboro. I own my own trucking company, and I'm doing a lot of things, so I kind of asked my dad to check in on the property when they asked me to turn it over to my kids, can he go over and take a look and see if things can be salvageable? And he did. He told me that they can be fixed up. So, I would like to take my time and my own money, fix the property up to where they're supposed to be for the City of Jacksonville. I think it's a good little property, and like I said, that's the only reason it's been neglect so long, because Miss Salmon had passed, and then when they turned it over, just no one knew what to do at the time. So, that's why I'm here today, to try to stop the process and hope that you guys will vote to stop the process. So, at this time, do you have any questions for me? And that's the only suggestion I have right now, far as trying to keep this property for my children, that they will have something. I don't need long to get them up to code, because my dad, he's a, you know, he's a carpenter and a contractor myself. He taught me, and we're just now coming in, want to take the building and get them back up to code. So, and I appreciate everybody that have contacted them and did what they need to do, but this property probably wouldn't have been neglected if, you know, she wouldn't pass and things like that. Now, if Miss Salmon was still living, then I wouldn't probably have nothing to do with this at all. So, since she, her grand wishes was that she wanted to leave something for her grandkids, this is the only reason that I'm involved, so.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a comment or question. You do realize that you certainly can fix up the front house under the city codes and- and state codes and, and ordinance and so forth, but this back piece of, this back house is not, not eligible at all for any sort of a building permit? I didn't know, I didn't get the impression-
Well, I, I just heard that now. Before, I didn't, I, I didn't know all that. Um, I, I didn't, I'm assuming that the front is, both the houses is kinda like right beside each other. They got another property beside that. I think if you go back in time a little bit, the way that it was explained to me through Mrs. Salin them, her dad built those houses, and then he left, it was four houses on two pieces of property. So she was the daughter, and she had a brother, so it was split between them two. So, um, Miss Ruth, who is the guy, the other two houses, their property, that was the, the wife of Cheyenne's brother, and then Cheyenne got the other two, two houses. So, uh, I don't know why this would have to be condemned when both of them is pretty much in the, on the same, they in the same vicinity. They got two houses just like this beside one another on the same property next beside that. So, um, once again, I mean, I have to do some research and kinda find out all this, what's going on, why it have to be condemned. I don't know why. But it could be a nice little, like a condo or two, two little housing units for single-family And I'll make it look real good for the city of Jacksonville, but if you talk about somebody with maybe a spouse and a kid that would be, be livable for, something like that, I think it would be real nice. Other than that, I don't know what to say far as the back unit, which is the same thing as the front unit.
Mr.-
I mean, you have access to both properties, um-
Mr. Carter, I have a question. So with this particular property at hand, there is a house in the front. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And they have pulled a permit on that house, and the permit's been outstanding for several, several months, but when we began to bring this action closer to council's action, they did start putting shingles on that house. So there is a house in the front, and they had put some shingles on the house. I believe that's all the work that's been done.
Now, that's, that's when I got word of that, that this, this when it all got done, I needed to get done, but we, we've been running into a lot of problems with, the storm came up here past, when, when I got a hold of it. So the storm was one big problem, and then it's just been the weather and then me getting down here. So I asked my dad to kinda help me kinda maintain until we can get it all together, so I can get their plan to come down and get everything back in order.
I don't, still don't think that relieves us of the zoning situation that exists here.
So this house is the property that's in back of the front house, which according to our code, because it's on the same property, pretty much this house cannot be remodeled.
That's correct.
So if that is the ruling, then demolition is in order. Now, if the property is demolished, what happens to the land that this property is sitting on?
It remains in the-
Within the family.
The heirs of Miss, Miss Salin, Miss Maddie Salin, whoever the heirs are, that remains in, in their name.
So really, the only thing that can be done is for the property to be destroyed, demolished, the house, and the grass and just keep lawn more, but nobody can put another house because there is already a dwelling on that property?
On the front. Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And Mr., Ms. Carter, also, the possibility of subdividing that, that lot, that parcel to a lot from two separates, is that a possibility?
Is there any remedy to that?
I, I would doubt it, just because it's, Glenn, go to the next slide, you could, uh, we used, we're-
I mean, it's, I looked at that.
Yes, the aerial, if we could go to the next.
Parcel.
Yes, so we could, Mr. Warden, I, I think if, if we can go to that slide, you can see. Go ahead, Gary. What, good.
The aerial.
It's in our, it's in our aerial. It's in there. We saw it.
Add it up for a minute. There it is. So you, you don't have that.
Look at that. You can see, uh, this, can you see where this two, you see the heavy black line? It's not a, it's not a rectangular shape. Uh, it, it's, it actually, uh, is already kinda looks like it may have part of maybe been subdivided, subdivided originally. So if you, but you look at that, it seems to me that it would be a, a very difficult thing to try to subdivide that lot. And again, I, I'm not knowing all the Ryan stuff as far as, you know, the requirements of subdivision, et cetera. I'm not sure that, again, it would be allowed. But again, just physically looking at the lot and the structure like it is, I don't see how you could even do what they call, I think they call, where you put a, a driveway back to another house.
Like a flag lot.
Flag lot. That's the word. So that approach, the picture.
Now, I don't, see, I, I really don't see what's the difference between this lot of one you talked about and this lot right here. This lot right here was all together at one time for the shepherds, okay? And they have a family cemetery that this, this road right here runs back to to get to the cemetery. And, and I don't know, I think somebody had took a picture and said they couldn't get access to this second house, but you, you can, because all I have to do is just clear the trees or the brushes that has rolled out into this roadway that can get back to this second house. So that's, that's, that's where I'm looking at, these two buildings behind each other. I can put a drive, a walkway down here and get to the two houses.
The issue is access.
I'm sorry, sir.
The, it, what, what is?
And they were livable at one time.
Right. I think that's the difference, is the condition of the, of the properties you're talking about. This one has gone so far down that it can't be brought back. My question is, does anybody know how many water meters at this property? Are there?
It has, it has two, one for each house.
Does have two?
But there are not active accounts either.
Right.
If you go back to the condition of the house.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Well, like I said, 2006, I had no control over it. My mother-in-law and, you know-
Basically, you didn't get it till 2017, is what you're saying.
I didn't get it to 2017. And then with, with her passing, you know, I'm just getting this from the husband that he wants the kids to have something, so that's why I stepped in. And I think it's a good idea for, I would like the council to give me a chance to keep the two houses and to get them back up to code. That's, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Mayor, what next? Thank you.
Legal process. This neighborhood has lived with these two vacant and dilapidated pieces of less-than-quality structure for 15 years. We have given this property owner, whether it's this gentleman or others, we have given them every chance to have this demolished free. I can tell you, eight, nine years ago when I came here, neighbors contacted me about these properties. We began to work with code enforcement and the property owners at that time. The record is clear. This is not something new. This may be new to this gentleman. It's a shame that some of the neighbors aren't here tonight, but I'm gonna tell you, as he is pleading with you to let him have another chance, they will be pleading you, please tear this down tomorrow morning. We have torn down over 120 vacant and dilapidated structures in this city, and I will tell you from personal inspection, only three were in worse condition than this. Now, I'm gonna ask you the question. Look at this picture. Do you actually believe a coat of paint, a fresh window, a new toilet, a new sink is gonna make that house habitable for somebody that you would want to live inside the city? If somebody out in the county or in some other county wants to live there, that's fine. This is not an acceptable level of housing in any community. What I will say to you tonight, the law has been followed step by step. These people have been given effort step by step. The front building should even be torn down, but these people took the legal step of getting a building permit and they activated it. But I will also tell you this, that front building ought to be torn down. It's not in very much better shape than this. The neighbors have constantly asked for both buildings to be torn down. Technically, we cannot tear the front one down because they've complied with the law. But I'll say this, complying with the law doesn't make that front structure truly habitable. You're really fa, sorry, sir. You're really faced with this situation. It's a non-conforming use. There's not anything you as a council can do other than say, tear it down or let it sit. But if it lets it sit, it's just gonna sit. The city cannot issue a building permit on a non-conforming structure. And at the end of the day, what I say to you is this, let the picture be the deciding vote. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm emotional about this for this reason. This council and this administration has stood together for nine years to tear down vacant and dilapidated structures. Look at this structure. If you don't believe it should be torn down, then I will acquiesce my position. But as manager, I'm saying to you, we've offered it free to them time and time and time again. This time, they constantly refuse it. When we tear it down, there will be a lien placed on their property for all of the costs, administrative costs, demolition costs, disposal costs. We gave them the opportunity to do the right thing freely. They did not do it, time and time and time again. So my position as manager is to ask you, adopt the ordinance, authorize the demolition, we will demolish it immediately, and liens will be placed on the property. Do you have any questions about where I stand on this?
No, sir. I got a question about, I mean, what has to be done even to bring the, the front one up to code? I mean, how, how long would they have to even do the front one?
Unfortunately, the state building code allows you to keep a building permit open as long as you're making progress. It does not state what progress is. So again, let's go back and look at the record. They received a building permit for this months ago. I mean, months ago, long before the hurricane, and they did nothing. The only reason, in my opinion, that they finally put the roof on there was to keep that unit from also being in front of you tonight to be demolished. They took the legal step to keep that right. They have no steps to keep this building. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say- That's not, that's not, that's not a good-
Everything I said was true, sir.
You need to have a seat. We're not gonna be argumentative about this. You have a-
I'm not argumentative, but I just wanted to look on the property.
Have a seat. Have a seat. Thank you. Sir, please come up, state your name and address.
My name is Alex MacGood. I'm the assistant pastor at Holy Church. I'm here on behalf of my son, family. I'm a lifetime resident of Jacksonville, North Carolina. Been here all my life. I've been here to see Jacksonville grow through the grants that they've received and where we are today. I feel like I'm of great access to them grants that we receive to bless everybody in the Jacksonville city of Jacksonville, along with every part of Jacksonville. But my stand is today that six months, we'll have the house finished. I am a 30-year retiree from the base carpenter. I build structures, I tear them up, I fix the one that are rotten that people say they can't be fixed. This building is fixable and repairable. We're not going into that building to patch up. We're going in there to cut out all the rotten, redo the floors, from the foundation up to the wall to the ceiling. Also gonna put a heating system in the, in the, in the building to be livable even by me, because we're not out to be disobedient to our city governors or city councilmen, but we're here to want to be able to exercise our right to remodel or fix up something that our parents left back that, you know, we're still holding on. We know there's a change gonna come about in the Jacksonville area, but any small rural areas, the change is not gonna take place like a major overhaul to come in and buy these little small pieces of properties that people have been holding on to practically all their life. I do respect the city manager, I respect the attorney, my councilman, the city man's, city councilman, and the mayor, but I know that we will fix this house, all the houses that's there, in six months. Now, I wanna say what really happened, even before the flood, we got a lot of rain this year, constantly made it difficult to even try to put on a top on the house. They, you know, and we bought, I bought tars and put on the wind blow, that next time you get ready to go on the roof, the rain would come. And right now, then, after that, this storm, which I lost in my house, all the bottom part of my house, the trouble that I had next to my house that my brother-in-law lived in was totally lost. So it's been difficulty for us to, for me or to my son, trying to get to this house and get it up to par like we wanted to. Yes, we did. We got the top on the house, we're putting a facial board around it, we're gonna do the inside of it, and, and I know you're keeping up with it, but the house can be fixed in six months. And that's what I asked you to give us there.
Which house are we talking about? Are we talking about the one that's in that picture right here?
Talking about-
The one in the front.
Both of them will be done. Both of them can be done. They just, they was there, we can fix both of them. I did have some hardship to get back to the property. It's not a major job. I did those houses. There's a house right there in the Georgetown community, 181 Eraskas Lane. The house was completely tore, altered pieces, termite it out, and we went in there and built that house from the foundation and saved the top and put everything back in there to livable, air-conditioned like it's supposed to be.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, because basically, you're saying that you can work on the front house, right?
Yes.
That's-
I said both.
Nah, I'm saying that's under the current code because of, he actually pulled a permit for it.
Legally, they can work on the front house.
Right. So there was never an issue with legality and working on the back house, period, then, right?
No permits ever pulled on the back house.
There was no permits pulled from the back.
And the only reason we did that, only reason I asked for that was because we wanted to make the front house look good, and then the next time we would have moved to the back, when that, that's the reason we didn't try to get all the money at one time.
But what they're saying is, you never pulled permits on the second house.
And the only reason it didn't work, we just said, we just do the first one to get it done.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Unless you have something additional to add, we're gonna go ahead and start right-
And for clarity, I, I don't think they knew what our time limit, Jamie, earlier.
Yeah, usually it's three minutes.
Three minutes. So I think, now clarity for Jamie.
Thank you.
McMillan Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you. Okay. So, with that.
Okay. Mayor Phillips, I make a motion to approve the city ordinance that the dwelling will be demolished and removed by the city, thus removing a health and safety hazard and eliminating slum and blight in the neighborhood.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to say that we all certainly sympathize, but as the manager pointed out, the opportunities have passed, the opportunity to have this done at no charge has passed. You still have the opportunity to direct your efforts and your finances toward the front of the house to preserve something for your family. Thank you.
Any other?
My understanding is like, because of, you couldn't, you didn't pull any permits on the, for the property, you couldn't even do anything with it, because you couldn't pull permits. There was nothing that you could do.
It's a non-conforming use.
Right. So there was never anything you could do for that. Only thing you could do is work on the front property.
Comments?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second? Was there a second to the motion?
Yes, there was.
All right. All those in favor, say the "a".
Aye.
All opposed?
You can do it.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
So this brings us to our report section for the meeting tonight, and I'm gonna start down with Mr. Warden.
Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, just reviewing the presentations tonight, the Jacksonville High School football team, all of the outstanding holiday decorations, the, the fact that our Jacksonville Youth Council is, is active and, and doing well, and of course, the, our police department's supporting the Special Olympics through, through their donations and their work and the National Night Out, and also our, the, the award, the honors given to our police chief, which, of course, all of those things just make me so proud to live in Jacksonville, and I, and I'm really just tickled to death that we, that we live in such a great community and everybody tries, tries to help each other and pull together, so. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Following on that, I'll take his line and say, I'm just glad to be here.
Mm-hmm. Glad to be here.
Dr. Washington.
Just kudos with what Mr. Warden and Mr. Thomas have mentioned. And Dr. Wardriff, maybe sometime, if staff has the opportunity to do so, can we possibly put something together with the help of Mr. Carter to talk about dilapidated properties within the city limits and what family members can do, and if it's heir property, what heir property members can do, so that maybe in the near future, we can avoid a situation like this, to give the citizen an opportunity to keep their properties within their families and to be able to rectify this problem before it comes to something like this.
Happy to put together workshop item.
Mr. Bittner.
Well, Bob said a lot, nice comments, and I'm glad that he read it just as I wrote it, so thank you.
Actually, I stole it when I walked by. I stole it.
I do want to report that there was an Onwassa meeting last week, and the major item of business was the repairs to the Northwest Plant. We talk about dedicated city employees. Well, Onwassa has some dedicated employees, too. That plant suffered severe damage, and the employees there put it back together. The only problem is it doesn't run automatically like it's supposed to, so they've been working 24-hour shifts keeping it running, but they, those days should be not too far off to be completed, because we awarded a contract of a little over a million dollars to get the equipment necessary to restore automation to some aspects of the plant. The other item of business was the election of officers for the year 2019. Mr. Paul O'Connor was elected again treasurer secretary, Greg Gons was elected chairman, and yours truly was elected vice chairman. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Okay. First of all, I would like to recognize the 95th birthday of Reverend Dr. W. K. Rayner. He's actually been preaching since the age of 15, so he's, he's been preaching 80 years. And actually, the night of his birthday, he continued to have a sermon that night as well, so he's still going strong. So happy birthday and congratulations for all you've been, Dr. Rayner. Also, we attended the Muffler Point Marine Association Black and White Ball, and the mayor spoke so eloquently on us having our one city and what it means to be a loving and caring community. But I also can't help but, as the Dr. Martin Luther King Day was recognized, I thought about how would the views of Dr. King be viewed today, during today's time? And I also thought about how Jesus Christ wasn't accepted in his time as well. And what they both did was went up, went against the order of things. They stood for the law, but if the law was not moral, they made sure they challenged the law. So I just hope, as we go forward as a community, we continue to think about morality in terms of how we treat each other day in and day out, you know, love thy neighbor as we love thyself, and we continue to treat each better, each other better, and assist each other in all that we can as we go forward, and be in a loving community. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Williams.
Just a reminder that on Monday, the 28th, that's this coming Monday, at 4:00 p.m., we'll have the joint session with the county commission. My understanding is they'll have a 2:00 o'clock joint session on Monday with the school board, and then the city council and the county commissioner will have a joint session at 4:00 p.m. Those will be, both meetings will occur at the county administrative building at Burton Park. They will be televised. That's all I have. Thank you always for your service.
Mr. Carter. Motion to adjourn. Well, you got a one-city moment, don't you? You got another, we already had it, we already had it. Okay.
Oh, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.